Good afternoon, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. Ms. Bower, will we have roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Hopkins?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
I'm here.
Ms. Page?
Here.
Mrs. Quintero?
Here.
Madam Chair, the clerk certifies the presence of the court.
Thank you very much, and we all stand with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the government of our which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this time, Dr. Hornick, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No, ma'am.
Okay, hearing nine, would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye? Aye. Thank you, motion carries. And at this time, I will turn it over to you, Dr. Hornick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I would invite Judy Woolfery and Renee Hoddger. They will come forward, and it will be very important information for you all this evening. Over the past few months, all of our school sites have been represented in a Virginia Family Engagement Cohort, including Constantino Group, and we're proud to give you an update this evening. So Judy, Renee, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity for us to share some information on our work on family engagement this year. We were able to participate in the Family Engagement Cohort for Virginia educators. There were one or twenty-four divisions across the state who participated. Very proud to say that all of our schools were represented in this cohort under the leadership and guidance of Dr. Hornick. And tonight, we have representatives from each school, parent school leaders, of one capacity or another, either administrator or vice counselor, who will share some of their takeaways from the cohort, as well as their plans for the upcoming year. Their work centered around five principles that were outlined by Dr. Constantino, and those are creating a culture that engages families, communicating effectively and building relationships with families, empowering families to support their students' learning at school and at home, and evolving families in decision-making at school, and finally engaging with the broader community in supporting our student success in school and that of their families in the fall. So we're excited to have our school representatives here tonight to share their work. They're going to summarize their key takeaways, their plans for the future, and we're going to start with Ms. Marilyn Grubb, who's the principal of Lightfoot Elementary. And she's going to share an update from Unionville Elementary, because Ms. Jakubic was not able to be here tonight, and Lightfoot Elementary, and then we'll progress through each of the schools, working our way from elementary through secondary.
Good evenings. I'm going to start with UES for Ms. Jakubic. So this year, UES started tackling the problem of chronic absenteeism through their family engagement. This year, Unionville focused on building relationships with families through different events, like their back-to-school night, literacy night, day of service, bringing back musical performances for first and second grade. For the upcoming school year, one of the biggest takeaways for Unionville was to hold parent sessions at many of the different events that they already offer, as well as building in some more events. For the importance of regular school attendance, building on what they started this year to increase opportunities to engage their families. At Lightfoot, we also had a very similar approach with how to engage our families. We wanted to do something a little bit different, and we wanted to work on homework. And it came through one of the realizations this year of an event we had, which was our reading night. And you can see some of our pictures, I think, on the slide in a second. You'll see too, where we had staff members, Dr. Hornick, Dr. Woolfery, and parents come and actually learn different strategies that they could do with their students at home. And we had such great feedback from that. We gave books where they could read together and games, different games that they could play at home to help with reading. And like I said, we had such great feedback. So once we got into the family engagement cohort, we started thinking, one of the big takeaways from that was actually different easy things that we can do. So focusing on that, we decided we could focus on communication. How do we support relationships via different platforms, social media, email, and website to highlight some of those pieces around homework? And we hadn't taken that, it's just like I said, it's just a little bit different perspective than what we've done before. We focused on personal letters and phone calls home, specifically in the area of attendance. But when we had those conversations, how can we support you with homework? For studying, for tests. And in the elementary level, really focusing in again on reading with your child, reading to them, listening to them read, have them read to siblings, cousins, the dog, the cat. And also, how do we help them get back into study habits? So we can be reviewing for, in third and fifth grade, a big piece is our Virginia Studies and our Science. We also thought that, you know, one of the big things we started this year and going into next year is the training. Using, same thing like with Ms. Jakubic, our reading night, our STEAM night, to actually train our families on those strategies. When we got to our STEAM night in the spring, where we could really focus in on those same pieces that we had. So working with that, going into next year, again, just some easy things that we really learned that we can do, that will make it better. Continuing to involve our families, engage them very specifically on strategies that we know are fun, healthy strategies around homework. And to not just train our families and offer those events for our families, but also to offer very specific training for our staff members, professional development, on the importance of family involvement, and specifically in the area of homework. Thank you.
Good evening. It's nice to have the opportunity to share our reflections and our experience at Locust Grove Primary School. We identified daily school attendance and building on practices of family engagement as an avenue to raise daily attendance and continue to grow our family engagement. So we identified three takeaway school culture and vocabulary that highlights attendance as part of a child's comprehensive school experience. We offer a really great service to our community that will shape alike. And in order to maximize exposure to daily instruction, we need our families and students to prioritize regular and disciplined school attendance. We want to take initiative in creating positive relationships on the terms of our families. We ask a lot of our families, so it's important that we show sensitivity and flexibility to the needs of our families. We need to meet our students and our families where they are, in their availability, and then invite them to participate further as they're able. And then invitations of engagement are important. Sounds simple, but in its simplicity, I think it's really powerful as well. Invitations can go a long way to send a message that parent involvement isn't just important, it's necessary. Invitations of involvement welcome our families through the threshold of excellence in their child's school involvement. So there were two themes or easy ideas that emerged from this work, school culture and communication. So under school culture, as a result of this work, we are going to continue to build on the practices that we have put in place, a positive school culture and family engagement. And embedded in these practices, we also want to keep the topic of regular and disciplined school attendance. Do you hear a theme, regular and disciplined school attendance? Such an important part to build up a lifelong learner, a lifelong approach of discipline towards their schooling. We want to keep that topic of regular disciplined school attendance as part of our regular vocabulary. So when we have school events, when we're making phone calls, when we're meeting with families during PTA meetings, parent-teacher conferences, yes, we want to look at academics, that's a big and important piece of that. We want to talk about behavior, but that attendance piece is critical as well. And we have many stakeholders that we also want to highlight that have shared valuable time and money. Project Excel, local businesses, parent volunteers, local nonprofits. It's important that we highlight the investment of our stakeholders who have already contributed because they see the value in the service that we provide. Thank you for your time tonight.
Good evening. I support Locust Grove Primary as well, but tonight I am presenting for Locust Grove Elementary. Some of the practices that we implemented this year and that we saw from the cohort already, it kind of confirmed what we were doing, as well as gave us some additional takeaways from what we were able to learn from this. Some of the practices that we had in place were offering PTA meetings both in person and virtually, which allowed us to increase our attendance at those meetings for families who couldn't physically come out. We also did monthly parent attendance and Eagle of the Month certificates to acknowledge our students who were able to achieve both of those elements. We also increased student programs to support student belonging. We had a student ambassador program this year that involved giving students jobs throughout the building and just increasing their role within the building, which supported their attendance. They wanted to come to school because they had a purpose. And of course, their purpose is academics and to learn, but it just increased their excitement to be there in the building, and they felt very much more a part of the school. So that was very successful, and through this cohort, we were able to see that those practices did support what we were trying to accomplish. Additional takeaways that we did learn from this that we'd like to continue to kind of work through for the next school year is an increase in the two-way family communication. So for instance, you know, we invite parents to parent-teacher conference. We confirm the time that they arrive and when their appointment is, but offering them the opportunity to say, what would you like to talk about? You know, we have an agenda of things we'd like to talk about, but just giving them that opportunity to respond back to us. Also, additional training for families to access the parent portal so that they have access to their students' grades and achievement and successes throughout the year, in addition to regular report card time and interim reports. We also realized through this cohort, just a better understanding of knowing the family communication preferences. So when we do provide opportunities for family involvement, we make sure that everyone is able to receive that message, and they're fully informed about what's going on in the school. Some ideas to better engage families, based on what we just talked about, or to offer tutorial sessions for parent portal on Canvas during some of our engagement events. So actually providing that opportunity when they're already there for other events. And even incentivizing that a little bit. We have birdbumps that the kids love in our school, and so coordinating some of that and then putting that together with parent involvement, we hope will help. And then continuing to do an outreach for families that don't sign up for conferences. Again, being more proactive with our communication with families who speak Spanish and making sure that we're communicating with them with their preference of language. And then utilizing data to make sure that that information that we are getting out is actually reaching the families. So one thing that we talked about as a result of this cohort is the possibility of holding a celebration night of the diverse families in the Locust Grove Elementary School community that include music, dance, food, and dress, possibly during Hispanic Heritage Month. We also want our PTA activities to be better communicated with families to allow more representation during that time. Going back to parent-teacher conferences, being able to provide a summary for parents of what will be discussed at that parent-teacher conference, and provide the parent an opportunity to have feedback on that as well. So that goes along with that two-way communication. Providing a process for parent requested support and information from the school counselor's webpage. We'd like to be able to utilize that webpage a little bit more. We talked about even having a QR code on that webpage where parents can interact with the information that's there. And if they see something that they'd like to have support in, they can respond to us that way. So we basically want to continue to build on a lot of positive practices that we already have in place to celebrate students, but to build a stronger community and stronger sense of community within the school.
Good evening. So this cohort was an incredible opportunity. There was a lot of things that was just thrown at us. But a lot of the things we do at Horns Elementary very well, but there's still some things that we can improve on. One of the things we talked about improving is our communication with our families. So this year, we worked on, we wanted to make positive phone calls home within the first two weeks to start developing that relationship between teacher and student, but also staff. Another thing that we instituted this year was good behavior notes. So we have a behavior recognition system that goes weekly, but we want something more immediate for the teachers and staff to have access to. So they were able to send those good behavior notes home more frequently. In the cohort, one of the things they talked about was your signage coming off the street. And so we've been looking at our signs, and because we have a higher DLL population, how many of our signs are in Spanish? Or when you walk into our vestibule, are we saying we have a translator available? And the answer is, we have one sign, and we don't have anything that says that we have a translator available. So that's one thing we're working on having as soon as we come in, is that we have translators available via the language line, just so our parents are aware of that. On the types of communication and engagement impact, according to Dr. Constantino, a few of the higher ones were efficacy-based activities, interactive homework, home visits, family academic socialization, and home learning support. So we're going to try to incorporate more of those going into the next year to see if we can increase that engagement. Like the other schools, we are focused on our attendance, but it starts with the engagement piece. If students and families aren't engaged, they're going to want to be in school more. So one of the things we did was, we're trying to revamp our PTO after COVID. A lot of our volunteers had gone away, either to find another job or they were just sending away. So with the revamped PTO, we offered childcare through the National Honor Society. Students come to watch students during the meetings, and it was great because the parents felt relieved that they didn't have to watch their child during the meeting, but they were also in safe hands. And so while having the PTO revamped, we also offered them the opportunity to come in and volunteer throughout the day. And we instituted a non-deep incentive. If you want to see parent engagement, they came in and played dodgeball with their kids, and they had a blast. It was a great time. So when we encouraged and invited the extended members to the family, more people came. And so our DLL teachers put on a fantastic game night to start those conversations and communication with families. And we easily had, I want to say over sixty in attendance for a two-hour game night. Another thing we started doing is alternating the time of events. And so our students have a tough time coming back after school later at night. And so that's why the yellow game night is right after school. So the teachers kept them until the parents could arrive. And I think that was a big contributor to that. Another thing we started offering was some virtual opportunities. So for our graduation this year, we actually streamed it. Since we, or promotions, sorry, for our fifth graders, we streamed it live. And we had over sixty families tune in to watch their students go in promotion, which was amazing. So the new ideas, like I said, we're going to continue to offer close and after-school activities for our families. These are just some of the ones we've done. The positive phone call or postpartum within those first two weeks just to build that relationship base. Like I said, we want to have signage that represents our families at Horns Elementary School. The incentive for attendance and behavior is something that the students can engage in, but like I said, families can come in and help with it also. And then the last one is, we have to reflect on what we've done. Like I said, we have done a lot of things well, but we can still continue to improve moving forward. So I'm excited to see what we do next year. Having as many families come in and support our students just makes our school a better place.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight about family engagement. Some key takeaways, and my, when I'm going to, I have an interesting perspective as I was going through this, because I'm both a fan, and many of us are the same. I'm a parent at the school as well as a principal of the school. So I have kind of, I've experienced some of the things that the author was describing, and I tried to take that lens. And one of the things I've always found as a parent is it can be very challenging to access the information I want and when I want it at that moment. And so I think a major part of what we will do at Gordon Barber moving forward is putting that information in parents' hands quickly, ahead of time, as opposed to a reactionary step, being much more proactive with them. So I'll get, I'm going to skip to number two. The efficacious family is what that refers to. A family is efficacious if they know where to find the information they need, if they believe in their ability to help their child, and they believe that they have the information they need. So we will ask classroom teachers to be really uniform in pushing information out to their families to make sure they know when test dates are, what assignments are coming up, what are the key ideas and vocabularies that they can talk about with their children. And that way, we will empower parents to take a more active role in their child's education. After all, as it says, it's not just what they're studying, how they learned it, and all those things. Within the school environment, warming up the school environment, we can go a ways in that. One of the things that the author recommended that is very powerful is the warm transfer. So when a family calls in, the secretary picks up the phone, takes the message, transfers them off to somebody, and the person has to re-explain the whole situation again and go through it, and then maybe to a third person. So the warm transfer is something I'll go through with my secretaries and staff, is how to do the transfer. You can keep the person on the line, hi, this is John, so and so. He's calling about his child. And you warm them up so that they don't have to explain their issue again, and the person that's receiving the call is in a better position to help them. The ten-second rule is a challenge that I also offer by secretary, staff, my administrative assistants, which is to not allow somebody to stand unreadied for ten seconds or more. So even if they're in the middle of something, they can stop and read them and say, hey, I'll be with you in just a moment. And then finally, under that is the administrator check-ins. So one of the things the author recommends and he points out is that we oftentimes make phone calls throughout the week, and we don't follow up. So as a principal, going through some of those unsolved or what we think are resolved issues, circling back around them to call the parent and say, was that situation resolved? I just wanted to see how that was handled. And I think as an administrator, that will go along with building trust with parents. Hearing that followed through, I can just hear it back there, but three days later, I'm still thinking about it and I'm very concerned. The transparent school model is those along with the efficacious family as well. And we can scroll down to the bottom to the next slide. So the transparent school model, as I said, the communication empowers families to support their child's learning. One of the things you can do with that is you can give signatures for parents to talk to their children about what they learned at school that day. Today we learned about, please have Annie tell you about it. And Rick, she said, so moving from just the signature I checked it off to actually having something to talk with your child about. As I mentioned before, improvements in basic customer service. And then the two-way communication administrative parent surveys. I did, I administered a parent survey for my first year at Gordon Barber. I haven't done so. We gave a lot of surveys about transportation, about learning models, about this and that. It's been a while since we've asked, how's it going? So I think moving forward, and to the next year, we're going to survey families about their experience and see what ideas for improvement they have. Our parent teacher organization, as Horns Elementary was describing, parent teacher organizations took a major hit during COVID because of the lack of in-person meetings. And then as those in-person meetings were involved, the children were aging out. And so that left a lot of our organizations with a skeletal framework. So perfect time to rebuild it, to say, we're going to gather the parent teacher organization. And kind of like the model that the county was, we're going to do that with the parent teacher organization. What is our vision for our organization right now? And what action steps are we going to take to improve it? And then finally, also going on with what Horns Elementary was saying, and I loved your dodgeball idea, but identifying every opportunity that we can for to have volunteers assist in this using those opportunities. Oftentimes, we have parent engagement on our terms, where we say, you can come in and do this, but you can't do that. You can't observe the classroom, but you can walk along here, this or that. True engagement is offering, is finding these opportunities to bring the parents in. So we're going to find some volunteer opportunities, partner readings, that sort of thing, and have parents come in and actually take advantage of the volunteers that we have online. So, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Marley Ramback. I am the assistant principal over at Locust Grove Middle School. And I appreciate the opportunity to be here with you tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to be part of this program. It affirmed a lot of things that we're doing, and it kind of opened up lots of opportunities for things that we could do in the future. To start with, some of the pretty big takeaways that we took. Number one, probably one that was most significant to me was mostly the engagement that impacts student learning actually happens in the home. And what does that mean? That means holding the student accountable. That means, hey, did you do your homework? Did you study for your test? So that one was a big one, and this will kind of all wrap back around. Number two was people will engage to the extent that they feel confident. Number three was how welcoming the building are, what does the signage look like? And number four, making those connecting to family culture and experience. And the form of practice, and I may have gotten a little too specific on this one, but come mid-third, ninth weeks, we took a look at our academic success for our students. We saw that about one in five students were not passing at least one content area. And we saw that almost one in ten students were not passing three to four different content areas. So that was a pretty, that was pretty significant for us. And we found it was also really challenging to get parents to regularly assist with bringing them in for parent meetings, checking on Power School, and checking on classroom assignments. So those were some of the challenges we faced, along with some of the takeaways. So that kind of brings us, so with that challenge in mind, number one thing, when we did our parent meetings, we would bring them in, meet with administrators, and one of the big things that we found was parents really struggled in understanding, especially at the secondary level, what our grading scale was, the different categories. They weren't on Canvas enough, or they didn't really understand how to navigate Canvas. And a lot of our meetings were spent trying to instruct parents how they can, how they can really be empowered and really help their student at home. So the first thing, as far as plans for next year, is to almost hold like a parent university. And what that would look like in the very beginning of the year to have parent information where we talk to them about how to use Canvas. What are the tricks and tips for using Canvas? How do they use, you know, when no one's assignment is turned in? How do they know how to look up a grade, types of things like that? What about Power School? Do they know how to use the settings that they're alerted when a new grade comes in? And ways that they can really help organize their students. So especially middle school level organization can be a challenge. So really focusing on how parents can be empowered into helping their student at home. The second one is also in the beginning of the year is that teachers are to reach out with a personal phone call to every family and welcome, let them know that they're excited to have their student in their class. And so that would be within the first month of school. One of the other ones, things that I mentioned earlier is the, not all parents are on Canvas, they're not all checking in regularly. So for the teachers to create more of a weekly or bi-weekly newsletter that goes out to parents with what information they need to know. Because most of the time, parents want to know when's the test, what assignment to do, what grades, what do I need to know to help my student? And so not just relying on them to go in and check Canvas and go through six different classes, but to actually give them like a weekly newsletter with kind of everything all in one place. The next piece is conducting partnership meetings, and we did this this year. But I think they need to be done a little sooner and more robustly, where we sit down with students that are struggling with an administrator, with the teacher, with the student, and come up with a plan. If that student is struggling, what do they need to do? Do they need to participate in after-school tutoring? What are the plans that we can work with the family to help their student be more successful? Also, parent information sessions, I mentioned, do it in the beginning of the year, but we can also target them throughout the year of the students that are struggling. Pull the list through Power School and then keep engaging those parents. How can they help their student? How can they organize their child? Do they know how to use Power School? Do they know how to use Canvas? So as opposed to just being a one-time thing, that this would happen throughout the year. Hosting a family, some family gate night to help really build relationships. It's not quite dodgeball, but bingo is fun too, a lot of it's just easy to play. And then teachers to make sure Um, and then teach, teachers to make sure those students that the teachers really need to see, to make sure that they're personally reaching out to those families to draw them in. So all of these strategies basically are about empowering the family, empowering the parents, and then also building the relationships. Thank you.
Alright, good evening. And people are allowing you the opportunity to be here in place of my principal, Renee Burke. Uh, my name is Vanessa Ward. I'm the school counselor with Prospect Heights Middle School. And, um, thank you for the opportunity to participate in the family engagement cohort. From that meeting, the following, the following really stuck with us. Uh, meeting families where they are, ways to effectively communicate, welcome and partner with them in their child's education. Um, what role does communication play in the success of a student? We, there's a staff activity actually in the book, um, that talks about, um, what is it like? How often do you communicate with parents? What did you guys communicate about? Did the parent contact you or did you contact the parent? So we want to make sure that we're getting our staff members, our teachers and, and staff, um, to, to be proactive and be in the first ones to communicate. Um, and, um, letting, letting the parents or guardians or special people who are raising our amazing kids know what's really going on with their children. Family engagement and communication is not about doing more, but doing it well differently. And at the onset of the family engagement cohort, we looked at data with the hope to improve SOL and math scores within a certain population. It was noted that there was an achievement gap in math and English for students with disabilities. We then pulled data from parent teacher conferences held throughout the school year and found that although students with disabilities are 20% of Prospect's student population, only, only 11% of parent teacher conferences were held with the parents of a student with a disability. From there, we developed our goals and action plan. The goal is that we will form relationships with our families of students with disabilities. The focus will be in educating parents on how they can assist their child with the academic expectation in middle school and how we can create an open line of communication. And we would also like to increase, um, parent teacher conference and IEP 504 meeting attendance. We, um, we are working on, or we have worked on transition plans for incoming sixth graders and, um, families, students and families. So we've actually, um, contacted every elementary school that feeds into Prospect. So Lightfoot, Gordon Barber, and OES. Uh, we have met with the fam, would met with some of the families that have a student, um, that has an IEP or a 504, just to introduce ourselves, um, let them know that we're available to meet during the summertime should they want to come in and meet with us during that time for a tour or just more, you know, to gather more information. Um, also let them know of our sixth grade, um, sixth grade, um, orientation nights, um, so that they are already aware, have known their calendars, that if they choose not to take advantage of a, a tour during the summer, that would then be their opportunity to do so. We will be doing home visits at the beginning of the school year to visit and welcome families. So that'll be during pre-service week. We will, uh, we're looking into, what we want to create an effective two-way communication practice. Uh, most of our families prefer texting. Um, so we are looking into ways, whether it's Google Voice or, or some other, um, platform to be able to communicate with our parents. Um, because they would much rather talk me text than to have us, um, call them or even set up a meeting. Uh, create system of measurement and communicating with families. So like our parent teacher conference, um, actually having that data to determine how we're communicating with families, what was most effective, how often are we, are we reaching out to families? And teacher staff development on best practice in classrooms that serves students with disabilities in the area of math and English.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, my name is Kevin Weber, uh, school counselor at Orange County High School. Um, it's, uh, my honor to be here to represent with, uh, Mr. Palmer, our principal, myself, being experienced with, uh, being part of this cohort. Um, I'll just, uh, kind of say that, uh, just, just lead off, as many of you know, as always, high school is a little bit of a ballack. We have parents, um, coming in with, with a decade in most part, um, with being engaged or not being engaged with their school's, um, trust, because it's hard to build. Um, it, but the, the flip side of that is if we have trust when they come in, with a lot of them, we don't have to work that hard to keep as long as we're doing what we know they need. Uh, so really what we wanted our focus was to be is that how, how do we pull people who've spent a decade not being engaged? Might be for good, bad reason, whatever it is, they haven't been engaged, it doesn't really matter why. Uh, well, how can we pull them and be more engaged with the high school? And really what we wanted to focus on was something that, something they'd never seen before, um, which is that their son or daughter is going to be leaving Orange County public schools in a few years and we go out and grill with them and everything. So, um, we figured that would be a good point for us to try to not only retain the engagement that we've had with, uh, with parents uh, for the last decade, but also to draw in some new, um, to draw some new folks to us. So, um, and I'll kind of let you guys read some of the stuff, some of the thoughts that Mr. Palmer had. Um, and I'll just kind of let you know kind of how, how that's gonna go in practice. Um, first of all, we're, we're going with, with the cabinet that, that our parents, they, they know their kids best. We, we want to lean on that a little bit more than we have in the past, to make sure that it's, we're building trust, um, on them being experts on their own kids. And having it not sound like it's just something that we're saying something we, we, we need. We really want to know, um, what they think was best for their kid, what we really, even form an opinion. So we're building what we like to call the quality of relationships instead of quantity of relationships. We want our members of parents to be involved with our various events, obviously, to go up. But we certainly want word to spread that it's worth coming to. And we believe that even if we reach a smaller group first and word starts to spread that there's, there's quality things going out of the high school, we'll be, we'll be in a good place. Um, one other thing that we wanted to look at was leaning more into, um, our ELL teachers to help us out with some of our best and helping out with some of our students. Um, and one, um, one great thing that we've been able to do, we've been able to interview and have been recommended for our employment is a school counselor who's by label for next year at the high school. So we're very excited about being able to have someone in our, in our department who can step up to the plate and, and help serve some of our underserved students are, uh, are students of color. Um, we want to reach out to them, obviously, get, get those parents involved. Um, just having some diversity in the department is something we're looking forward to as well. Uh, Mr. Palmer has instituted an advisory block for next school year, which is going to allow us to draw some of our students, uh, some of our teachers into, uh, into these types of conversations that they never have before, um, or at least in probably 15 years. We had something similar at the high school when I first started here. Um, and we're going back to this. So it's gonna give those students an opportunity to have a teacher that almost all the students love, a teacher that they not have throughout the school day, that they'll be able to spend 15, 20 minutes with, um, depending on how long that advisory block goes, just so that they can have conversations without having to also say, oh, so by the way, I didn't do my homework last night. That is something that they have to really worry about with that adult. So it gives them somebody they can talk to, not just their school counselor, but someone who, that they can reach out to. And that those parents, um, can, can say, maybe I'll need to talk to this teacher because it's not about your grades. It's about what are they, what am I seeing on a day-to-day basis from, from my child? What are you seeing? So we're really excited about being able to do that. Um, and we also want to include more of our teachers in our college planning, financially planning nights. Um, so that the administration, teachers, and counselors are all working together as a team, um, to, to ensure that our, our families are being, that they're being served. One thing that we did, because we are having a slight change to our master schedule this year. We were at more earlier than we ever have. We've got a parent night at the high school. Mr. Palmer did to explain what the master schedule is gonna look like for ninth graders as well as 10 through 12th graders. Um, and that really doing that very early in the, in the second semester gave us the opportunity to explain what was going on without having to be, you're gonna pick your classes tonight too, because that was important. Because when you know you're gonna be doing that, that's the only thing that's on those kids minds. It's the only thing that's on those parents minds. So it was simply, here's what the master schedule is gonna look like. And then giving the opportunity for, uh, parents to ask questions. And then there was actually a small parent committee that went together to, to follow up with any questions that they had from Mr. Palmer as well. So we did that, and we had administrators and students go over to the middle school when, when the, the times to get ready to select classes, just to talk about their experiences. And, uh, there were several, uh, middle school parents involved with, uh, being able to attend that as well. So we, we're really excited about, Kevin, we have to engage parents. Uh, our biggest thing that, that Mr. Palmer and I always talked about through this B part of this cohort was we just don't want numbers. It's about keeping quality of numbers. Um, we don't want to just check out boxes. We want some parents to be able to engage. And that's why we focus not only on what is very important, college and career readiness is super important, but also that's something that, that parents that haven't been engaged with, that's something new that we may develop into. So we're excited about that.
So as you can see, this was a very valuable experience for all of our schools. And it's, it, it has a lot to do with what we do every day and one of the most important things that we have. I just wanted to leave you with the five simple principles logic model, which was a big part of this. Um, just so you can see that, that talks about those different things that we can do. Um, they can call them simple principles, and maybe they are simple, but as you can see, there are a lot of action steps that aren't even to really make them happen. So having a culture that engages every family, um, communicating effectively and building relationships, empowering every family, engaging every family in decision-making, and engaging a greater community. And I think you saw an example of all of those elements in, in the principal's presentation. So if you have any questions for any of the principals, they're here. Um, we appreciate the opportunity that you allowed us to have this time with our peers across the state of Virginia. There were other schools involved in this, and we just really appreciate your support in that. Thank you.
Judy Renee, thank you for your leadership, and to all of our presenters tonight. Thank you for painting a really strong picture about what you've learned and what you hope to accomplish. This, of course, is a large component of the draft strategic plan that we are looking forward to bring. Uh, we're planning to bring it June the 5th. Um, and there, there's an entire section based on family engagement and outreach, uh, stakeholder engagement. And so this, uh, this work ties right in. So I'd like to thank you all, and if there's any questions or comments from board members, and if not, I will move forward.
Okay, thank you all very much. With that, I have a chair members of the board. Uh, our next order of call here is letter B. And these are the, um, proposed policy provisions that we brought forward May 1st. And we, uh, went back in JCA and did try to make the definition, so to speak, of a, of a closed school, which is closed to a transfer. Um, more accessible and more clear cuts of the strike throughs that you see. There's, that information is still in the policy. Um, it is now in a, in a section, uh, where we essentially define, um, what a school that is closed for transfers is. And so we're available for any questions you all may have, and these are the ones from, um, two, two weeks back.
Any questions, guys? Alright, um, so this is an action item of mine, so, um, I don't intend to motion, please. I had to adopt draft, um, CPA, draft, oh, CPS draft for repetition, draft JCP, draft CPS for JCA F1, draft JDCR F2, and, uh, JCA updated draft, as presented. Okay, thank you. Can I have a second?
Go second.
Any questions? Alright, there are no questions. Um, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. There's a pose. Actually, Carrie, thank you.
Thank you, madam. Chair members of the board, we will move forward with Mr. Honaker and supplemental appropriations. Here.
Good afternoon. I'm here to request a supplemental appropriation to the food service fund. One being $7,050. This amount is, uh, prized the federal, state, and local funds. Any questions? Thank you.
I don't intend to motion. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you, madam. Chair members of the board, at this time, I'll ask, uh, Ms. Blair, supervisor of school nutrition, to come forward. And I believe you have maybe the next couple here in line. Is that correct? D and F for sure, correct?
Great. Yes, thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. Good evening. Um, very curious to talk about the renewal of our dairy, bakery, and produce contracts to provide food to our schools. And we did put out, uh, our fees for these to see who wanted to serve us, and we received one from each. And it was the ones that we've been using over the years, and we're very pleased with it. So we're happy with this. Any questions? No? I don't intend to motion.
I don't want to take all the motions, but I'll, uh, Ms. Blair, appreciate what you do, and I will, I will, uh, alter that motion to accept the renewal of that contract.
If you can have a second?
A second.
Thank you. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Actually, Carrie.
Thank you, Linda. Thank you, madam. Chair members of the board. At this time, I would like Mr. Sartor to come forward with a request for surplus property from transportation qualified by Mr. Hill. Surplus property for technology.
Yeah, gasoline, bulk gasoline.
And bulk gasoline. Thank you, Justin Sartor.
Yes, um, good evening, everybody. Um, this evening, I'm asking, uh, the approval to enter the state motorfield program. To give you a little explanation, state motorfield program is a consortium. Um, it's basically any agency within the state plus a number of different school divisions and local governments. Gives it a lot better buying power and more, uh, more competitive contracts. Um, excuse me. When we, uh, put this up to bid, we actually did not get any responses, um, which was very unusual, um, considering that Orals has had our business for the better part of 25 years. Uh, but when we submitted their, submitted the, um, invitation to the university service lines. Um, if you recall back in the winter, we were issued a revised contract with them that drove our prices up quite a bit. This contract is 36 cents per gallon, she claims. That's hard recommendation. And, uh, it should be a very smooth process. It will be serviced by Mancile Oil.
Are there any questions of Mr. Stolver?
Is it, is the yearly contract as well?
Yes, so we can, if we decide that we are dissatisfied, we can opt out at any time.
Okay, um, if everyone is comfortable, I will entertain a motion on this.
Is there a written recommendation that Orange County Public Schools enter into the state motorfield program?
Thank you. Can I have a second? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Actually, Carrie.
Thanks very much. The second item is, um, I'm looking for approval of, uh, declaration of surplus property of three sub-stands. Uh, two are due to their age and their condition. Uh, the third recently was involved with a collision. It's had kind of a colorful life with us. And this is the last, unfortunately, the last incident does not necessarily need to be prepared for the convenience of students. Uh, they'll be either sold or used as straight credits for future purchases.
Thank you. Um, Ben, assuming we, we approve this, do you get them out there?
I think it's amazing. You've been 14 years on the Chevy power.
If you're interested in singing like 14 years, it's like on Chevy power. I'm happy to show it to you.
I've seen a video of, uh, me in Detroit. I'll make the motion. Thanks for what you did. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Actually, Carrie.
Thank you, Justin. Great. Surplus property for disposal from technology.
Um, again, this is, uh, a list of items that we have that are either obsolete or are no longer in service. Uh, the biggest, one of those is those Cisco network equipment towards the bottom there. That was part of our old phone system. Hopefully, they could return on that. Uh, and some of the other items are broken further down. But as you can see, there was seven, there was eight, we're now on there's 11. So these are items that are re-
But as you can see, there was seven, there was eight, or now again, there's eleven. So these are items that are required. It's absolutely part of our broken, uh, [inaudible].
Again, is everyone comfortable with approving this? Is there a free request of repairs of the surplus property? Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. At this time, I believe it is Mr. Hartle. Has a recommendation for our propane supply for the upcoming school year, correct?
That is correct. Thank you, Dr. Hartle. Thank you, Madam Chair, Members of the Board and Chairman. Uh, this is our final renewal for the current contract for the propane supply. And this contract is with fossil gas. And we recommend that the, uh, approval be given for this contract. Uh, it's been a good service. Uh, in some years, we've been able to block in the price, and not after this past year, we still would, um, get carried away with the price increases. Who else have that option? And this contract will be the party brought to bid in April, when we execute. So this is the final renewal of the current contract. They can talk to Mr. Sager, uh, in the year of what may be added propane to the state contract for the school. Meanwhile, any questions or comments from the board?
So, um, last, is everyone comfortable with this or?
I moved through the final one-year extension of the vision for being supplied contract with fossil gas appearing July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirty.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. If she cares.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Doug, I know you will stay on here to give us an update about, uh, projects and other things at facilities and meetings.
Yes, indeed. We had the bulk of the items on the list this time around, over from spring break. We got a lot of that. I know the source will start with Gordon Barber, where the project is ongoing. Uh, and some of the items have been completed in the last two months. Metal studs, door frames, exterior sheeting, electrical plumbing, roughed ends, and ductwork installed. Uh, they are still working on drywall roofing, window frames, and glass. And they also moved the door frame matter in the existing buildings. And so we have installed a temporary wall that will be repaired. And we have an existing force that is a firewall between the two buildings. Or has some slides of these, uh, [inaudible]. Exterior and interior of Gordon Barber. Brick is completed and launched. Um, windows and frames are installed on the outside. And we just see the, this little peek of what the roof will look like. That is the number of the mechanical or, or that color. No more flat roof, there's no more roof. And the, uh, intention is to put the same type of roof on the existing building next year. There's the interior. You can see about twenty percent of the sheet rock that they found. Frankly, the ceilings is installed, ductwork, electrical, mechanical, roughing. So that's it for Gordon Barber. Uh, on to Orange Sports Center. We have, uh, completed a retaining vault, but we see erosion problem in front of the building and on the side of the stairs. And so, uh, current [inaudible] has already seen over there. I got the photo of that work in progress. We also have a side on the upper side, where it's the rod ready to help the wall to filter out any water. Right at the left back, you can see the bottom. Also at, uh, at the fieldhouse, we painted the railings, the exterior doors, and the structural ceilings that were being put in. And the third project at, uh, Orange Sports Center, to the [inaudible]. We, uh, paved a connector between the side parking lot of the fieldhouse and the parking lot of the O.A. So now we can, student traffic have that through there off of the [inaudible]. We don't have to go through the circle from [inaudible]. We'll leave it in some traffic on [inaudible]. And the private school. We hope to make a two-way and make the whole thing preferably through the O.A., hopefully, but that's down the road. We also put a empty sidewalk to keep the student foot traffic [inaudible]. New roadway, and keep it all mixed with fieldhouse [inaudible]. Darrow piece of building. Okay, on to Prospect Heights. Uh, we have replaced the windows in the cafeteria, which were the worst of the bunch. They ultimately all will be replaced, and unfortunately, it's a poor design. And we have the same situation at Lucas Grove Elementary, but, uh, that's, it looked great and it complements well with the stuff that we've been doing a couple of years ago. No [inaudible] stains, no more windows, it's all the way. And they also have the, that's at the bottom where you can still open up against the fresh air. On to Lucas Grove Middle School. We installed new lettering on the gym wall and above the main entrance. We actually had the big letters for the gym wall. They were found in the storage area at the school. Then we had an exterior door that thirty people had been in. Let's put them up. We had to buy one of the letters. Somebody lost it in that eleven-year period, but they're, they're up now. And we also put smaller letters on in front of the school, so people in the front area will pass the [inaudible]. Um, to Porterfield Park. We, uh, have a, had a sign on the, on the visible arc side of Porterfield Park that was, uh, previously done using this peel-off plastic lettering. We had to remove that peeling off. So we got a more permanent sign painted, put up there. Also, this, uh, this, as far as the text, uh, we're able to take the old damaged scoreboard out at the other end of the field. With the, uh, pink tempera scoreboard over at Prospect Heights, where it will be painted and put up permanently there, instead of the older one. So that's what it looked like. And we also took out a whole bunch of stumps. This is the pink scoreboard that will be repainted, otherwise a good shape of [inaudible]. We also tore out a whole bunch of big stumps back there. From when we had that storm, the trees broke off. Um, the trees down, just all of the stumps. Last but not least, Unionville. We, uh, did another round of radiator and asbestos paper removal in the remaining hallies, offices, and restrooms. And painted with a radiator's work. So that takes care of all of those things, except there's like one set left in the kitchen that we had to, hopefully, fill out. That's all we've got for now. [inaudible]. Or is it, some of our projects get [inaudible].
They're going.
Other way. Sorry, Chair. There's the only one. Yes, Mark?
The, uh, scoreboard, the replacement of scoreboard is a prospect. Is that going to be installed, prospect? And then who wants to install it?
At Porterfield?
Porterfield.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Got that's better word.
I have a question about something we haven't talked about. Lucas Grove Middle School, out by the highway, not twenty, but it was six eleven. Flatman Road.
Flatman Road, yes, sir.
We have trees along there, uh, and we've had four or five fallen down. They were out toward the road. Somebody's pushed them back toward the woods. Uh, my question is, is that the school's responsibility and county's responsibility? Even though they're sort of out of the way, I prefer dead trees that are right up physical, laying on the ground and to be removed.
I agree with you there. Um, I believe that's been done, but I will investigate and make sure. I don't know where the property likely is. I think it's probably a tree log from the bus side of that property.
I don't think there's, I mean, that's, uh, I, I think it's county property. I don't know who's going to take care of it, but I think.
Well, it's our, we'll, we'll get it taken care of. It's been at all the rest of the giveaway. We'll, we'll be able to thank the Lucas Grove.
All right, Doug? And at this time, we will bring forward to you a first read of some, uh, policy provisions. And we'll start at the top, um, with amendments. I believe this is just a, an update to a legal reference. Uh, the next one, as far as evaluation superintendent, is a policy drop to put the evaluation system in line with new requirements from House Bill nineteen oh four and Senate Bill eleven ninety-six. Capitalization of fixed assets. Garrett, if anything, he wanted to speak to here, but I know that this move, uh, was to put us in line with the county and how they handle, uh, the policy for, um, capitalization of fixed assets.
And there was also a point of recommendation from the auditor standing.
And also a recommendation from the auditors that we follow suit. Talk to that. Thank you. The next two are the student and staff, um, acceptable computer use systems. And I believe this was tied primarily great to a legal reference update, correct, as well as some other language enhancements?
Adding some additional technologies that have come about since the last policy.
Adding some additional technologies that we are now, we now live with on a day-to-day basis that were not when the previous policy was written. The next two, uh, we've put a lot of time into, uh, to address the homework and the grading policy. And Judy and Renee are here to, um, provide any et cetera, answer any questions for homework and grading. Homework, we wanted to be, we felt that it was too restrictive. And needed to provide a little bit more banks on the river without being too down into the weeds, uh, which is where this policy, um, was, understandably, because I think this was originally crafted. Is this the one that was kind of during COVID? This is the three? Okay. And in the grading policy, uh, one of the things that we identified, as well as with a, a number of folks who work on these committees with us, um, is we operate on a ten-point scale and have been, except for our, our lower performing students. And so in addition to adding some information on teacher grade books and when they should be updated, as well as elementary grade books, et cetera, interim reports, uh, recommendation to you, uh, to work and operate on a true ten-point grading scale. And then the final one is one that we also put, um, quite a bit of work into, uh, as well as getting, um, advice from both our division council, as well as our, uh, well, Jason Ballen, uh, from the special education side. And this, uh, provides some information and some clarification to an existing policy. So this is an enhancement to current policy JBC. Uh, and the, the bulk of the information, um, that we recommend adding, uh, is at the section towards the bottom with the admission of, of non-resident OC, uh, non-resident students in Orange County public schools. And so these are, uh, being brought forward to you, uh, for a first read. And of course, will be available for any questions or thoughts between now and, uh, the fifth, when we will seek action on these particular policies. Okay. Okay. In the next section, uh, this is also just for, uh, the board's edification and to start to consider this information. Um, last week, uh, superintendents received the following email from our new state superintendent of public instruction, uh, which is tied to, um, I would call it a, an initiative, uh, from state leadership to enhance access to tutoring. This platform through the K-12 learning acceleration grants is, provides, is, is open to all families across the Commonwealth. And you see in the, the line that has been repeated to us is the last sentence in the first paragraph. I guess so to speak, our Virginia teachers are the best tutors for our students. And so this platform and this program allows teachers, uh, across the Commonwealth, uh, to essentially become an employee of and on the class wallet platform and set their hour, hourly rates and also decide how they would schedule tutoring sessions. As you can see, the second and the third paragraph, in-person, virtual, hybrid, one-on-one, et cetera. And essentially get paid, um, via class wallet from the money that parents put into and pay the program, and then the teachers are paid through there. There's also program grants, uh, to, and you can see the criterion at the bottom, where families in need can seek grant funding and apply for fifteen hundred dollars of grants for their school age children to help cover the cost. And so part of this is a parent component as well. The reason that we bring this forward to you is that, uh, I suspect that a, quite a number of school divisions across the Commonwealth, uh, are going to have to decide how to make this, um, program and support this program, yet also make sure that we're not setting teachers up to violate school board policy. And so, Lord, if you could go to, um, let's start with GCQAB. As, as this came about, and we had a webinar on this, uh, last week, late last week, I worked through and identified a, a, a few policies that could potentially get us hung up here. Uh, first one is GCQAB. And this is a policy that, uh, basically says one sentence, staff members may not be paid by anyone other than us for tutoring stu- students enrolled in a class under their direction. And, Lord, if you could also go to, uh, policy EDC. A line in this policy at the end here where employees are prohibited from utilizing school property for personal use or personal gain. And, Lord, if you go to GAB, please, uh, I will not read this whole thing to you. Uh, this is one of the ones that was brought forward with some language enhancements, but to summarize it here, essentially, school division technology under the acceptable use agreement is supposed to be used for school business. And so as we look at wanting to make sure that we support the program and making sure that students, particularly in Orange County, have access to the best possible tutors, it seems to me that there is a, a continuum. And again, this is not for action tonight. This is more to just kind of wrap our heads around what we've been looking at here. On a continuum from, I guess, most restrictive to least restrictive. On the most restrictive end, um, we essentially don't change any of the policies in place. And should a student who is in a class with a teacher signs up to be tutored by that teacher via class wallet, the teacher would have to not accept that engagement and the student would have to find a different teacher to tutor them. The middle ground, I guess, so to speak, would be to build in, um, an exemption right now for this particular state. an exemption right now for this particular state. Kind of driven state-backed initiative, uh, where there would be flexibility given, uh, for as long as this program will be in place. Uh, from everything that I've been seeing, it seems that this is a, um, this is a stopgap measure that the, that the, that the state is looking to put into place to help address learning loss in COVID. I suspect it might be extra funds, et cetera, that might be used. I don't know that this is gonna be around forever. Um, and so it might require a change now and then, but that would, that's kind of the middle road. Or of course, the least restrictive is we change these and allow, um, any teacher to tutor any student at any time regardless if they are under their direct stead in the classroom or not. And so, um, I just wanted the board to be aware as, as this comes out, many, many, many school divisions, uh, will be wrestling with, uh, this particular question. Of course, I will work with, uh, division council as well. Um, unfortunately, he works with a number of other school boards, so, uh, he will, he will have some ideas uh, as far as what other divisions are thinking, but this is, uh, really just to bring to your information that this initiative has come forward. Uh, we wanna make sure that we're giving all of our students the best opportunity and also make sure that we are not unnecessarily sending any of our employees up to be in violation of school board policy.
Thank you, Dr. Morgan. Appreciate it.
I, I had a couple of comments.
Okay, stop.
Uh, as most of you know, I was a classroom teacher for thirty years in another state, but they had almost exactly the same rules. You couldn't tutor your own students and I would certainly support that wholeheartedly. Uh, but I still encourage teachers because there's nothing, when you apply for this position, uh, to be a, a tutor, there's nothing that says it's limited to this county. You could be tutoring somebody from Spotsylvania or halfway across the country, uh, in this. So if you're really interested in it and you have time to do it, uh, obviously outside of your school time, I, I would recommend you, uh, apply. Uh, and I, I'm, I'm not going to apply, but, uh, uh, I thought, obviously I'm a retired teacher, long time retired, but actually they, by the way I read the description, uh, if, that technically, I haven't been in the classroom for twenty-eight years, not even in this state, but the way I read what they said, as long as I had a good certificate at the time and I retired, I would be eligible for this program. So I'm saying there's a lot of retired teachers that could, uh, might want to take part in this program.
Well, I, I think, uh, and I agree, Mr. Hopkins, and I know, and, um, we, could you go back to the, that you know, basically, um, remember? Could you scroll down, try to remember, just scroll up, try to remember where this was? Do you click the attached flyer there, probably, please? Actually, you might overhand that on. Yes, if there was a part of this, if you talk a little bit, Mr. Hopkins, about the, who, who, um, what, what type of individual, you know, would, would be able to apply for this, um, and you're right, if, if they had a litany of folks. Okay, yeah, so, uh, and it, it's actually on the, the video, we went page tutors who are currently licensed in any endorsement area in any, in any state. Teachers who were, right there, Laura, previously licensed in any endorsement area, um, employed as instructional staff at any accredited private or parochial school, uh, college or university, having space tutoring learning centers, assist in technology. So there's, you know, they're.
Pretty wide open.
Right, they're, they're, they're facilitating this, um, and, and, and opening the doors wide open, uh, to try to get as many qualified people available, uh, to help students as possible. So I agree that, um, and as Ms. Page was saying here, that really the, this program will go as far as the staffing is gonna allow it to go and how, how many people are able to, are able to essentially be recruited or enticed, um, to participate. And so I, I see this for our, for our purpose here, uh, it could definitely be a benefit to students. Um, and also we wanna make sure that we do a good job of, of advertising it to our teachers to let them know that this is an opportunity. Uh, but just wanna make sure as we go forward and make sure that we make very clear whatever the parameters are gonna be. And I think that will be the discussion here with the board as far as what, what provisions are we gonna establish to make sure that we don't set, we, we don't wanna set somebody up who has good intentions signing up to be a tutor to potentially even unknowingly, uh, violate school board policy or not meaning to. And so that, that was just a concern when, when it came out and I heard that on a webinar Friday, but the policy immediately clicked in my head. Uh, we gotta make sure that we do this right before we do a mass rollout, which is why we haven't, you know, sent it to principals, et cetera, yet, because we wanna make sure we get this, this, uh, the backend addressed before we put it out for, for public consumption.
E D B is still working on it.
Yeah.
Well, uh, I mean, you can't only tutor students, I mean, students available, if they're going to school in the daytime, you can't tutor them in the daytime because they're already in school. I, I think, I mean, I was twenty years in the music business and to wonder being an advanced fan in some of our high schools, it was required that you had a private tutor, so you couldn't get in the, in the organization. So, and in high math, I actually did some tutoring myself, uh, uh, students were in other schools, uh, in, in advanced math because a lot of them were media. But it was always going outside of school time and outside of school.
I wouldn't even, uh, frown upon, uh, the legislative board for it on that policy, just really don't have a choice.
So what we, yeah, so perfect. So what we will do is, um, we will seek, uh, division council opinions. We'll work with our principals and, and the cabinet, um, now that many of them are here tonight, fortunately, and, and have a little bit of information on this. This, this is, this is pretty fresh coming out. Um, you saw the data that the superintendent's email was, I believe, last Wednesday. Um, I could be wrong, eight, around the twelve, something like that. And so, and we can come back, um, with some potential recommendations for you all. We can continue to, to just kick this idea around just to make sure that, we have this on the up and up and then we will take the next step to make sure that our teachers are aware. Uh, and we, now that we have a great platform, uh, we will be able to engage our families as well. And just one last thing before we move to the presentation, the board meeting calendar today. Basically, the, the first day of summer. And, um, it, it'd be hard for me to identify the, the sheer number of teachers, uh, that came here today. First day out, out, um, working on curriculum work. Every single room in this building, uh, was full with teachers and administrators who were here beginning the, the hard and good work of, of, of quality curriculum work and design and, and also to Judy and Renee for your leadership in your department and instruction, getting that set up. Uh, it, it was really incredible to see and I know this, we see, we're seeing a culture shift and I know it's anecdotally, uh, but I know last year, uh, these two ladies told me very clearly it was, it was hard to find people and hard to get people to come out. And this year, we, we maxed out numbers and had to actually let a few know we didn't have enough space so that when you're trying to build a culture of, of excellence and, and getting the buy-in and, and getting momentum, uh, those type of, and sometimes it's very anecdotal what we get qualitative, uh, but that was, it was really great. High spirits, um, and just worked from beginning to end of day. We'll be here all week, uh, engaged in this work. And so that was really a testament, um, to what we're doing here and that was really welcome, uh, really welcome to see. So I really appreciate that as well. And finally, now we will come down and, uh, we will discuss the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four board meeting calendar, but we will, I think we'll have to start before that, um, Ms. Byron, with a discussion about June. Even though that's, that's still this school year, so I can let you go from here.
Um, we were discussing, um,
Yeah, we're starting June.
So in June, we have a meeting on the fifth, which is our regular, uh, meeting. And then we have our work session, our regular scheduled work session on the twenty-sixth. However, we had a piece of significant number of administrators who will be attending a conference, uh, most of that week. So we were, um, wondering about rescheduling.
Yeah, we'll, on, on the twenty-sixth, uh, twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, I think return to twenty-eighth.
So as far as meeting content for the next meeting, what do we have, Ms. Byron, left for that meeting? I mean, tonight, I know we had first read for, um, we have policies for the next meeting.
First reads.
So is there any other business truly that we'll need for that meeting?
We will bring forward the strategic plan on June fifth. Um, and then there will be, uh, seeking the action on the first read items, um, this evening. And there will likely be, uh, a new first read of some additional policies, um, that particular meeting. And if, if this.
We're experiencing a small workload that night other than, um, policies, correct? So why don't we just get rid of the twenty-sixth meeting and if we need to do a call meeting for employees? Because I think that the business can, can wait, correct? If that's what I'm hearing, for policies?
Yes, the big, the biggest hangup would be if, um, if we weren't able to, i- if, if we have the flexibility to get a, a call meeting to address personnel. Um, s- somewhere from the, you have, about nineteenth on somewhere there to, to address personnel would, would help us tremendously, but outside of that, it's the work, the workload itself is, is like.
I'm, Chairman, I recommend that we move the meeting to the nineteenth. And then when we're on the fifth, we'll know more about what.
That we need it, okay.
That's all. I make a motion, uh, people, for now, remove the school board meeting to the nineteenth.
Okay. Second? Okay, so Mike, are you available on the nineteenth?
Available, but the fifth, I'll be, I'll be on the way.
Okay.
And that's, I.
So we got two members that are not available till the nineteenth. So why don't we wait and, I, I, because I think we're not gonna have any real business. I mean, we'll do.
Okay, does, does she just not do anything and decide on the fifth?
If, yeah, if we need to just wait, do a special call or something that we, if that's okay with everybody. All right, thank you.
For another recommendation, um, in lieu of that, move to twelve, just to ensure we have forms and, uh, a consolidated work session and, uh, meeting.
I don't think.
You won't be here, okay.
You would, what, you were saying the fifth?
Moving the fifth, the meeting, the fifth to the twelve?
Yeah, just.
I, I, I can do this.
So you can do the twelve?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins?
Might be better even, even better if we're gonna skip the other meeting.
It, it was still probably, if, if there's still a high probability that it would, that we would still have to have a special call meeting somewhere even after that. So that could add, just based on timelines and where I foresee vacancies.
So you, you know, you can't do the twelve before, and Mike can before, okay, and Mike, you can't do the fifth?
Yeah, I think the fifth and the twelve. And so we, we, we need to.
So I say let's go with, let's keep it at the fifth and then we'll decide that night if we need another meeting and if we can just do a call meeting sometime for personnel. Does that work? Sound good? All right, now do that.
Thanks, Madam Chairman, support.
You have to go back to your meeting calendar first.
Okay. All right.
Okay, so this is the time of year where I just go through and set the actual meeting dates for the upcoming school year. Um, I followed the typical first Monday, last Monday, except for our holidays conflict, so in July, we dropped July tenth. And then also in July, we suggested moving the work session back to the twenty-fourth just because all teachers come back on the thirty-first. And that would be a long day for everybody, so we thought in a busy day, so we thought the twenty-fourth would be better, um, for the work session in July. Don't recall any other unusual. Oh, October, yes, in October, we suggested moving the work session to the twenty-third because there is a conference that Dr. Morgan would be attending the twenty-ninth, thirtieth and thirty-first.
I know, it sounds good, looks good.
And so we'll just ask for approval, let's change this, so you all have time to look at your calendars.
Um, Karen?
Yes?
Um, since we're starting with the, um, the new school board counting, I would like to make a proposal that we, um, begin holding our meetings at the, the board supervisors' meeting hall as well. I've talked to two of them and they both thought it was a great idea that we would be holding our meetings there. I don't think much goes on there. So utilizing that facility for our board meetings as well, I think it's more central to the location.
Thoughts?
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm kinda like an old hat. I think in the school board business, we need to be in our, in our facility, sorry.
I just think that it's closer for everybody. It's central to locate some people that are coming from the other end of the town to come to board meetings. It will be closer to them. And it's, it's a nicer place, no offense, everybody here, but the tables are, they're, they're spread out, it's, it's so much easier to sit.
I, 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 I don't agree it's a nicer place.
Um, you don't?
Uh.
Not in that.
No, but I, let me tell you what. If you sit on the floor over there and look up at the boardroom, which whichever people are there, you only see them from the neck up. And I don't like it. I've told them they need to put a false floor in there or do something. I mean, just spending two hours seeing people from the neck up is not right for me.
Well, and I also think that we already have our staff here till seven o'clock. I mean, till seven, have a meeting and however long. I mean, and then to expect all the staff to pack up and move to when we already have him, them here much later, I.
I don't know that all of the staff is coming directly from the building. I mean, if they're having physicals and stuff coming from the other side of the panel, it just won't be really looked at.
Are we planning to, uh, are we planning to take our meetings back to the schools like we used to do? That's something that COVID took away and I think it should come back around.
Great, if I wanna jump in here. So, um, I personally love the idea. And I, I think it, um, I, I, I think it, I think it's a really good idea. I know the, the hangup is gonna be being able, the, the, the conundrum comes in with the live streaming and having it be a, a really quality experience. Um, I, I personally love the idea and know we could, and that, and it was a lot, pre-COVID, a lot more flexibility. Um, now that we have the, so I think that would be trying, trying to navigate that potential, I think, great, I, yeah. Cause I don't know.
We don't have the equipment right now to, to do that, you know, take it on the road, so to speak. Um, obviously, the audio is very good in here. We have speakers above. Um, obviously, the audio is very good in here, we have speakers above, we wouldn't have that. We'd have a portable setup, um, displays would possibly be an issue too. I, I'd have to see, uh, every location, but that, that is
Would you mind taking a look at that this summer, just kinda see what we have, if, if we were gonna pursue that angle? Because I, I, I like the idea, um, and, and always have, but it, it, the reality changed a little bit with COVID live, you know, live streaming, um, you know, during COVID, and then, because the live stream also is a, is a benefit and for transparency and openness with our community as well. And so, but if you, if you wouldn't mind, Ray, maybe just kinda do an inventory of sure, what we might need in order to accomplish that, we can get back as well.
And then another thing, you know, we went, we now live stream, so if they, people wanna see the meeting or whatever, all they gotta do is live stream it from here. And we, you know, we have it at seven, so they have plenty of time to get here. So I, I'm gonna just say right off top of that, I'm not personally a fan of moving. Now, I do like Mike's idea, if it's ever possible to get back into the buildings with the kids and see the kids and stuff, but I'm, I'm not one in favor of, and I, I haven't personally talked to the chairman of the board of supervisors or any of them to see if they are truly in with him. I know you said that they are, um, myself, so, um, I'm not in favor, so my vote would be a no.
I just thought it was inappropriate, kinda for you.
And I, I respect that. All right, anything else, Ms. Byron, back to you.
Um, so, let's see, back to if you remember where we were. So, um, just yeah, wrong text. The, 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 these characters. Um, we had the BSBA law conference on June the second. And I have Mr. Hopkins and Ms. Page and Dr. Moore attending that. Then we have a retiree brunch, we moved the date, um, to the eighth. Since I've printed these, so we do need to change that. So June eighth is when the retiree lunch is here. Ten o'clock?
Yes. Is it here?
Yes. And then moving on to July, of course, we, um, our offices will be closed on the third and the fourth, so our board meetings on the tenth. There's also a BSBA conference on education on the thirteenth, so if you'd like to attend, just let me know. Uh, the new teacher institute is the last week in July, when all the new teachers will be here, um, and in their buildings. The work session on the twenty-fourth, and all teachers return on the thirty-first of July.
And as we work through a finalized complication, um, for this coming year, we will make sure that, uh, you all get an invite to that date and time as well.
And then moving on to the June fifth agenda, I will be, um, updating that to remove most everything except for the policies and the calendar. And we also will have a special public comment that night for S R, three grant and plan, and then we have regular public comments. I believe that's all?
Thank you, Ms. Byron. What is session four, please? We have the, um, board report.
It turns to two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A, with Florida Virginia, the Warren County School Board will be meeting post meeting the following. Discussion of personnel and the performance of a division employee at all the rest of the sentence, two dash thirty-seven eleven eight one. Resignation, termination, transfer, employment, salary adjustment, and
Thank you, and have a second. And all in favor by saying aye? Aye. Thank you, and close session.